Yeah, I guess, I guess I'm the chair now.
You, you got, you got the big shoes there, big guy, yes.
I do, I'm still waiting for the gavel to show up. Um, but without a gavel, even so, I'll call to order the July 16th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting of the town of West Newbury. And we start out with an A and R at 37 Coffin Street. And I looked over the materials and he didn't quite understand what we were doing, but I bet somebody's here to explain it to us.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
So I, I, I'm Joe Knight, I'm the owner of 43 Coffin and 37 Coffin Street. So basically 30, when I purchased 37 Coffin, it was approximately 5.3 acres. Uh, I live right next door. Um, as you guys know, I already redid the house and I put it on the market. And I stole and I'm selling it, uh, at the end of the month. And what I'm doing is, and you can see the survey there that it's the lots approximately, I think, uh, 96, I forget, 96,000 square feet or something like that. The barn is going to go onto 43 Coffin and that lot line that you see will just disappear and 43 Coffin will own the barn and behind 37 Coffin Street, which is wetlands. So 43 Coffin will go from roughly an acre and a half to about three and a half acres.
Okay, so what is, so let me, let me jump in here. So, uh, what's currently Lot 4 just stays Lot 4. And what's currently Lot 5 ends up being combined with the lot to the north.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, that lot line, that lot line will just disappear, the one you just pointed to, that runs along the barn. That will disappear and then that that lot line will come straight back right across, yep, right where you are, straight across back to the driveway. Yep. And then, yeah, and then 43 will own that section and 37 will have two acres, 2.6, 2.1 acres.
So again, lot, what's current, what's shown here is Lot 4, nothing happens to that.
Oh, that, that.
Nothing happens to that, no.
Right, just to be, um, to clarify, that's not a lot now. This is good, this is the new lot line.
Yeah, that's the new lot line, yeah.
No, there's no arrows on it indicating lot line to be created.
Right.
So what's shown is Lot 5 now belongs with the new Lot 4. So actually.
Yes.
To, so where, where, so does Lot.
Now I understand.
Does Lot 5 include what's now 43, that area includes?
I'm gonna jump, I'm gonna share, uh, if Sue will let me, I'm gonna share my screen.
Of course.
Show the existing.
Sure, here.
Lot 5 will become 43 Coffin.
So can you guys see the mind map?
No, uh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So here's the lot as it exists now.
Yes.
You can see the barn here. And this house, and this is currently 37 Coffin Street.
Yes, I think so.
And so what they're doing is they're gonna block out this house.
Mm-hmm.
And then all the rest will go to what is currently, did you say 43 Coffin Street?
43, yep, which is my residence.
Gotcha. And who drew up this plan?
Everett Chandler, surveyor.
Yeah, I wonder if we could have, uh, Surveyor Chandler, I don't see his name there. Um, I wonder if we could have him clarify. Yeah, I'm sure it is. I'm just wondering, you know, I'd like to have him.
There's no title block, right?
There is a title block, uh, but it doesn't have his name on it and it's weird, I don't see.
So it's, it's right over next to the scale, PLS.
No, it's, it's not where I expected, Winter G E C. And why, why is there no stamp on this?
I don't know.
That's kind of a problem.
Let me hold up, the, the, let me just make sure, it has a stamp on the Mylar that's here in the office. I think he passed this in and so I would have it in time for you to put it in your packet, but the Mylar in the office has the stamp on it.
Okay, well, I, okay. I mean, I hate to slow things up, but I, I would like to see notations added to the drawing indicating new lot lines. Um, and it would also be helpful if, uh, if he were to show the existing lot, which you say is Lot 43, yes, number 43.
Yep.
Because after all, that's, that's an affected lot. It would be good to have that on the plan too. I think that would help out future people who might be confused as I am tonight. Do other planning members agree with me on that?
Yeah, in fact, there, there isn't really a Lot 5, that's the residual part of the 37 lot, which becomes part of the other lot, right? It's not like we're creating two new lots. This sort of implies that we're creating a 4 and a 5, doesn't it?
Yes, and it would be inappropriate for it to say not a buildable lot because it's, it's just to be combined with, so I would strike that language there.
Yeah.
Because it, it becomes whatever 43 is and 43 Coffin Street has a house on it, it is obviously a buildable lot.
Yeah, I think that's.
Is that though the grounds for the A and R, the fact that it, it wouldn't be a buildable lot?
I think the 30, the Lot 4 is being carved off as the A and R.
Yeah.
Yeah, Lot, Lot 4 is the A and R.
The other thing that, that, uh, came to mind when I was kind of looking this over and I can't see it that well from here. But I'm wondering if we're, we're sure the barn has this, has the proper setback in feet there.
Yeah, it does. It's 22.1 feet. It's not marked, but we made sure to have the side setback at 20 feet or more.
Yeah, well, as long as I'm going to insist on, uh, the plans being altered a little bit. Uh, I would want to see that called out. I believe you, just eyeballing it, it, it looks like, eyeballing it, I was gonna guess it was 20 feet. The fact that you know the number like that make, is reassuring.
So is there a new driveway for the, for the lot? For Lot 4, because you're taking its driveway away.
Yeah, there's a driveway on the right side now. So there wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't, there was two driveways to Lot 4, which I refer as 37 Coffin. There was one on the right and there was one on the left. So the one on the left in the prior meetings we had, we rebuilt the stone walls and we put the drive, and we kept an opening for the driveway on that side for that house. And then I took the driveway to that side, on the other sides, so that I'd have a driveway to the barn. And I built the stone wall there also.
Just wondering why that driveway isn't shown.
It, it should be shown, I, I believe.
Driveway for access, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can have, I can have them show it. I, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think he just figured, you know, he went over the A and R specs and he said, okay, this is what we need for the A and R. We're just carving off two acres. We have the frontage, we have the uplands. Um, and then the 43 Coffin, he assumed that the lot line was just gonna disappear. So we figured, I think that's how he figured it. So we wouldn't need to show the driveway or show the setback on the barn, so, but happy to do it.
It just, these sorts of additional notes are, are helpful in the future. Um, I can't, I can't tell you how often we've come across historical documents, we can't make heads or tails of them. So it's not a big ask, I don't think he should, well. I, it doesn't strike me as, it is a lot of work for him. Just to get this.
Yeah, no, no, that's fine. I just, I was trying to get this signed off so that I can move forward with the sale of the property. So if I need to get this, I can have them update the plan. And then, uh, I guess, when's the next meeting? The second Tuesday of August?
No, the first Tuesday.
The first Tuesday of August, so.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask my other planning board members here, is there a way that we can approve this, uh, as a plan not requiring, wait, what do we do? Confirm that the plan doesn't require approval? I forget the language.
Endorse as approval not required.
There you go, endorse.
Contingent on.
Contingent on the updated plan?
Yes.
I don't know. I mean, I'd like to see what we're endorsing, like to see the access and the.
In order, in order for that to work, you would need to withdraw. Um, and start a new clock. Yeah, because we have a short clock on these.
Oh, okay. So, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't do an approval and then on condition that I get the plan updated this week, I could probably get it updated tomorrow and have it back to Sue.
I, I defer to the wisdom of my colleagues here on that.
I, I don't have a problem with, uh, you know, the endorsing with the contingent that, you know, the, the Lot 5 correction, the driveway and the notation on the barn be made. Um, I just need, I want to be reassured that that's, that's a legal approval for the A and R. I, and you know, I think I defer to Sue's thought on that.
I mean.
Um, in the interest of, yeah, I mean, I, I think it's pretty straightforward, but we, there's a couple of things that should get cleaned up.
Sue, do you know if, uh, if this is something that we could do? Uh, by the book, not pushing things?
I ha, I have seen, um, A and R endorsements been made, um, contingent.
Yeah, I mean, I ran into, I ran into. Yeah, I've ran into A and Rs in other towns where we filed an A and R and we got the, the general endorsement of the planning board. With contingent on the final set of plans that we provided within the week.
Well, with, with, with respect, sir, we've, we've occasionally come across, uh, things that other towns have done that we wouldn't do here. So that's why I wanted to get back to what Sue was saying.
Okay.
Sue, I can't see the whole drawing. Do we indeed have a, you know, a correct signature block and the seal and all the other things that we need to record the drawing? It's not just the notes that we want, but there are statutory requirements for recording this thing.
Yes, so we do in the Mylar.
Yeah, I see it all there and.
Okay.
The only, the only technical thing that I was missing was the stamped. The stamp and the signature by the surveyor, but.
Okay.
If, if that's on the Mylar.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna have to, uh, what I'm gonna have to do is update the plan and will there be a new Mylar then? And then I can also have them stamp it, I can also have them stamp an electronic copy if you'd like. And I can, uh, send that to Sue also, so she can disseminate it to you guys, uh, prior to, you know, signing the Mylar.
Oh, I think. Yeah, and again, here's, here's what we're looking for. We're looking at the setback to the barn called out. We're looking at the new access to the newly created lot, which you're calling Lot 4 here. We're looking for annotations that, uh, which lot lines are being created by this A and R in addition to the lot lines that are disappearing. I also want to see, uh, all of Lot 43 um, on the plans and, uh, it, that additional thing should show up in the locus as well. Are we clear on those modifications?
Yeah, this is. I don't feel comfortable signing with that many changes.
So I, I lost you there. Can you guys hear me?
Yes. Now we can.
I'm just wondering too, Ray, I mean, we don't know that there is an instrument survey of the entire, you know, number 43. Um.
That's a good point. The additional lines aren't called out with means and bounds.
No, so we don't even know the rest of that exists or if that means fieldwork or whatever.
Do, do we, do we need to see the rest of that?
Well, it seems like Lot 5 isn't actually Lot 5, it's going to be combined with number four, existing number 43 Coffin Street. So then we need to know what the size of that new combined.
Size of the entire, you, you're correct, yes, I, I stand corrected.
Yeah, we, yeah, the, the lot after it's modified, after it expands and all this, we gotta just be reassured that everything is conforming there as well.
Because it's no longer not a buildable lot, right? It's becoming a buildable lot.
That language should be struck, it, it, it wasn't in the past, not a buildable lot. And when this is done, it becomes part of a lot which is buildable. So that language is inappropriate on this plan.
I think this, this need, the plan needs too many changes, I'm not comfortable signing it now.
Understood.
I mean, I, I, you know, he put non-buildable lot back there because that section is all wetlands, that's why. So, but I can have, that's easily removed. I mean, this is, like you said, it's not a lot of things. I can have him do it probably in an hour or two and I can have a plan for the board tomorrow.
Well, the problem here is if, if he doesn't have all the survey information for Lot 43.
He does, because he, he did my survey. He did 43 for me when I built my house.
Okay. Well, if, you know, if we have a planning board member who's not comfortable with it, I respect that. Tim, Ann, what do you think?
As far as requiring the, um, updated plan, yes.
What about the statements of events?
When's our next meeting? I think we should probably stay on the up and up here and just keep it nice and clean and not get messy with it.
Yep, it would be August 6.
August 6.
Three weeks.
And, and what, yeah, what, what's the reason for rushing this?
Just because I'm trying to sell, because I have it under agreement and we're trying to, trying to close on the property. But without the A and R, I can't close on the property, so. It would, it would, it would behoove me if the, if the planning board would endorse that contingent on me making these changes. So, and nobody wants to get it done more than I do, trust me. I'd like to get this thing off my plate.
Yeah, but I don't, until we, even if we approve it, we're still gonna sign it till we have the final drawing and so I don't, and there's not gonna be recorded documents, so I don't think you can close in any case.
No.
The other, the other thing that we run into here is that, um, yeah, I think Deb's correct. The, the number of changes made here, we may need to discuss as a board, not looking at a drawing individually um, at the 1910 building. We may need to have a brief discussion as a board looking over the modified plans. So I'm gonna suggest that, um, that we delay the approval. But again, I want to, uh, what, what do my colleagues feel about that?
I agree.
I, I'm fine with proceeding with the changes, but, you know, majority, I'll, I'll listen to the other members of the board.
Yeah, I think now that I understand, um, you know, the configuration here and the fact that not a buildable lot references to be removed was helpful. Um, you know, I can, I can go either way. It obviously would be better for the record to have a good plan in front of us that's complete. But, you know, um, I think there's, there's enough detail on this plan to, um, I, I think there's enough detail to, uh, for the board to act, but if that's not the consensus, then, you know, we can wait till we get the completed plan.
And, and, yeah, we're, we're, we're not gonna sign this, we're gonna sign the updated plan.
Right.
Understood.
Yes.
Well, now I'm really torn. I understand that we're gonna, we would sign the updated plan, but to Ray's point, what if there are things in the updated plan that aren't what we were expecting? Or, you know, or some of us think it's okay to sign and others say, well, wait a minute, he didn't do this or that. We're not in a meeting, discuss it.
I, I guess, my, I guess, my counterargument would be is if, if the plan's not done correctly and then we're back on it on August 6, you know, and then, and then you're saying I gotta make changes then, so, um, I guess I would say if I can make all the changes and get the updated plan to you guys. And if it looks, and you guys understand it all, and you can sign off on it, great. If not, we're back August 6. But, uh, you know, again, I'll, I'll listen to the planning board on whatever they need me to do.
Well, I realize it's inconvenient, uh, and I realize that, uh, you want to get this off your deck, but unless there's an objective objection here, I'm gonna suggest that we, that we suggest to you that, um, you withdraw this. I'm not quite sure how we do this correctly, Sue, you can help me out.
So it would, it would need to be withdrawn because you have 21 days to act and we'll be beyond that um, before the next meeting, so.
I think technically it would be that you request to withdraw this application without prejudice.
Yeah.
And then, and then we, we could allow that and then you get the plan fixed and you come back before us on August 6. I know that's a real pain in, in the butt for you, sir, but I think that's just the cleanest way.
And I would add that typically in these situations, we would waive any, you know, the, whatever fees have been paid are the fees. There wouldn't be any additional fees paid, right?
Yeah, I, that, yes.
Patient fees or anything like that.
Uh, so with, Sue, can you provide me the updated changes that the planning commission would like?
Yes.
Just so I can give them an exact list and I'll have, uh, Everett make those changes.
Yeah, so, and let me just reiterate them. Um, um, the drive, they, they want the addition of the driveway, the new driveway shown for Lot 37. They want the distance off the barn from the new side lot shown. They want the new lot, which is Lot 4, the outline, the, the boundaries to be identified as a new lot line. And my understanding is they want to see all of Lot number 43 as well as Lot 37. Um, so that you can see both and how both will be impacted. And to change not a buildable lot to be combined with land of 43 Coffin. Um, but rather just to keep, to be combined with land of 43 Coffin. Is that correct?
That ma, that matches, uh, what I want to see. Other planning board members?
Yep.
Yes.
That's, that's fine.
Yep, the area of the, of the new area of number 43. Combine with the old and new combined, whatever that new area is, would be called out, right?
Yes, we need to see what, uh, what Lot 43 is going to be like when all this is done.
Yep.
And that's not clear on the plan as presented to us.
Right, frontage, area, all of it.
Yeah.
And its purpose is, is so we don't create a non-conforming lot, right? I mean, that's, otherwise, there's not enough detail here to demonstrate that.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, uh, yeah, and I, I like to point out, 43 Coffin is already a conforming lot, so.
Understood, but it, but it needs to show on this plan, I think, just to.
It's changing its, its size and its area, I think, in fairness, say, to the assessor's office, among others, that needs to be clearly indicated.
Okay, no, that makes sense. All right, yeah, I just want to, I just was, I just want to make sure the plan, I mean, the plan, and we're understood this. It's already conforming and I'm basically just adding three acres to it, so it becomes a four and a half acre lot, so.
Right, right. So, uh, just, and also to do things by the book and to be absolutely clear here, then, sir, are you requesting that, uh, to withdraw this application without prejudice? Or do you want to go forward with the plan that we find insufficient? And then we'll take a vote.
No, I'd like to withdraw with prejudice.
Thank you.
Without prejudice, love.
Without prejudice, without prejudice, sorry.
Yeah, very good, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, we'll get you on the next, uh.
Next go around.
All right, thank you guys.
Have a good evening.
I'll be there. All right, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so that brings us to the next, uh, agenda item, which is 120 feet, 125 River Road. Um, and if we got it right, is it Eagle Nest without any apostrophe S? Now, have we, have we settled on that?
Yes.
I did make those changes through the, throughout the document.
Thanks.
All right, so, uh, Sue, do you want to share the decision? There it is. Planning board members, do you have any questions about this? It was distributed a little earlier. We've been through all the waivers.
Yep.
I realize I'm taking things a little bit out of order here because, uh, this was on the agenda, this was reviewing, the decision was 2D. And, uh, and, uh, Sue, you can go through and just look for eagles and change it to eagle, right?
Yes, I have done that. It's not on this one, but I've already done it in the cup, in my master copy.
Okay, good. And it's correct in the stormwater management permit?
Yes.
There's a point right there, you're just scrolling by it where the, the, I think, the type size gets smaller. And I wondered, that's just a.
Yeah, you're right, after, yeah, the after due.
New consideration.
It is different.
And, and that might be a good place for a page break so that after due consideration, the vote isn't broken up like that, but it's the, the tiny type was you get a little crazy.
Yeah.
Please.
Where were we in? Page 5?
Yeah. It's got them changes.
That's good.
Thanks.
This, these are the two places where Eagles lives in there, was when it was talking about the name of the road.
Got, got it.
All right.
And then this, I had a question. Um, just who typically attends that meeting?
Oh, boy, usually. Let's see, we need to spell it out. I think it would be you. Uh, the conservation agent, I would say. Uh, Board of Health? I don't know, help me out here, guys.
Okay.
Um, who have been involved in the, in the approval process.
The highway, the, um.
Yeah, who care, who care about where a shovel gets stuck in the ground, basically?
Roads. Okay, I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah.
But I'm gonna remove this, but.
And, and you would know better than me, Sue, whether somebody with the stormwater management needs to be there.
Yeah, that would be the Board of Health.
The Health, that would be Board of Health, so possible.
And the only, the other thing was the, um, the applicant understands that he needs the roadway maintenance and stormwater management covenant. And I didn't know if, I just want to make sure there weren't any other covenants that were required or any other documents required.
I don't think for this, no.
You're right, but I just wanted to make sure.
Septic did not share, it's planned to be two different septics, so.
Yes.
That wouldn't be one.
Yeah, I had a comment here, um, uh, down at the end. Either move the, that section with appeals to the next page. It, it really shouldn't be split, in my opinion. With.
Yeah, stick a page.
If you, if you, yeah, it's just paging.
Yep, it may move when I move the other one.
It, it may, just.
I'll make sure it does.
Seems odd because it's all blank anyway.
Yeah, easy enough to put a page break in there.
Yes, I will do that. Sid, yep, do you have any other thoughts, questions?
No, I think that's all.
I, I thought it was good, very good.
Yeah. Great job, yep.
Great.
Thank you. Now, uh, Sue, uh, the performance bond and surety and whatnot, we got something at the last minute on that?
Yes, yes, so we received from the applicant, who I believe is on, um, an estimate of construction costs. Um, Mr. Kelly is not able to, he was not able to, wasn't available to review that today. Um, so we haven't had a discussion on um, the adequate. Um, the adequacy of it or whether it's um. Or whether you use the entire amount or some portion of that amount for bonding purposes or performance. Um, purposes, so I think those were the questions, but what he suggested is that. Um, you might vote on it contingent upon um an agreement. To um come to an agreement with the um between the town, the peer reviewer and the applicant on the amount that's appropriate.
I have a question, uh in reading through that, um. It was only for site work, it did not include. A septic system or wells in the cost there. Uh, is that an irrelevant observation?
No, that's appro- that is appropriate. Um, because the town only only is concerned with the um the. The roadway and the and the um stormwater infrastructure.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
So were those broken out, Sue, in that document? I don't have it in front of me.
Let me.
The roadway and the stormwater.
Yeah, do you want me to pull it up? Can I do that?
Yeah.
Okay.
It was astonishing.
Yeah, I was very surprised.
Yeah, there were big numbers on there, no doubt, but I I just quickly see those broken out.
There with me.
There they are.
Yeah, if you scroll down, you can see the the detail.
Broken out, site prep, demolition, site work, site improvements.
Yeah.
The projected total here.
But if you if you scroll down below that.
Oh, okay.
There you go.
I didn't get into the detail here, okay.
I mean, just think of all the trees out there, you know?
Yeah.
Raiding. Cutting and wetland replication and all the rest of it.
Replicate, lots of replication, yeah.
Yeah. And you've got, you've got the wetland crossing stuff.
Want me to keep going?
Well, Mr. Kelly hasn't looked at it yet, he's, we can ooh and ah all we want to, but I don't feel like I'm gonna add much to the conversation.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure, Ann, that there was detail in there on this, and it looks like it's something for him to. Blam onto, because I only had a chance to look at the first couple of pages.
Oh, agreed.
Okay, I'm also.
So I don't remember, Brian and Ann, what percentage of these numbers we would expect to. Having a bond?
Uh, yeah, and it, I I don't remember the number either, and it's not on the entire cost either. Uh, you know, I think it's only on a on elements of it. Um, to my recollection, I could be wrong.
Well, I mean, we know it's it's, you know, the items, the site prep and the the roadway and and the stormwater control. Is that what you said, Sue?
Yes, that is my understanding.
Yeah, and that's what we've got here, so what percentage of that? It would be, I'm not quite sure. Um, and.
So this would be if the town had to take over the project, right, right?
Um, yeah, it's insurance, if we have to finish it because the contractor decides to walk away.
Got it.
Well, I don't know that it's, you know, the worst case scenario is the whole thing, plus it's pu- now a public bid when the town does it. So, um.
Yeah, I I I agree, yeah.
So I think we look again, look to Mr. Kelly, frankly, it's been so long since we've done one that I can't remember.
Yeah.
Um, but he will know.
I think it's, you know, money there to s- bring stabilization to the site. It's not necessarily to finish it. The town doesn't want to, isn't in that business.
In the business, right.
I'm sorry, but who's Kelly?
David Kelly.
David Kelly, did I say Michael?
Meridian.
Meridian, thank you.
The peer review. So in his note to me, when I told him that I didn't, that it wouldn't be available, the numbers wouldn't be available, he said. If we do not have this number into the board before the vote, can it be conditionally approved? Give with the condition that the town, the applicant and Meridian. Will work out the amount of the performance bond prior to the signing of the approval, but the approval will be still made. This evening.
We would approve it, but we wouldn't actually sign it until this was settled.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
That's fair, that's fair.
I I and I think it would be similar to the um the covenant. Um, you'd also make it, you wouldn't sign it until the covenant, covenant is, um, the maintenance, the road maintenance covenant is received as well.
We've already taken, we've already taken a vote of approval, right? This was really.
Yeah, this is for the language of the decision. Yeah, so the date of the approval is one thing, but then you have a. A date to to put in, to give to the clerk, the the final decision.
So with that, that would happen. With this vote we're discussing now, it would be contingent, but it wouldn't change the date, it would be today's date.
Right, um, it's the, so the date of the approvals is still June, I think, June eighteen. Um, but we need to get it to the clerk's office and we have until June thirty, uh, July thirtieth to do that.
Got it.
You recall that they they, we got granted a continuation or another continu- an extension of time to July thirty first. For the signing of it, so I can get it signed, get it to the clerk's office.
So that's two weeks.
So what happens if we don't have those documents and the thirtieth comes and goes? Got very quiet.
I think it would be null and void without it you being signed.
With no extension? I mean, I don't want this whole thing to blow up.
Well, in order to have an extension, it would have to go back, you'd have to have, hold a meeting.
They would.
Yeah. I mean, it could be an emergency meeting, but maybe Mr. Fusco wants to.
I'll have the covenant.
We snag a little tiny extension tonight, just in case.
So if, well, I I'm meeting with uh the lawyer tomorrow, so I'll have the covenant to you tomorrow, so then it would only be. The only part that we'd be waiting on is for uh Meridian to. Approve or agree with the the number.
Advised on the bond amount.
Okay, um, I mean. I would think that there's plenty of time to do that, but again, um. I I defer to you, uh, you guys do this more than I, this is my first rodeo, so I don't wanna. Um, say the wrong thing, but I would think that there's two weeks is enough time.
Well, there's the amount of the bond and then there's also the type, right? So that's got to be hammered out.
Um. Do we have a?
So if we.
What kind of uh surety you want to post here?
Uh, you're asking me?
Yeah.
Uh, the the lowest number possible, but no.
No, no, no. No, the tiger, you know, the the bond itself, you know, have have you worked that out with a uh? You know, talked to an insurance agent or somebody as far as like what you'd post? As far as the surety?
No, to be quite honest, um, no, uh, this was, uh, I think I received this, we were on vacation like. I mean, ten days ago and I got the 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 email about the bond, so um, so the, yeah, I. I was waiting for the number, uh, and then I was gonna do all that as soon as I got the number.
It's not just the number, but it's it's the it's the type. I will, I, you know, and forgive me, I feel like I uh I'm spacing out here tonight, but I mean, there's. There's different types, right? I mean, there's a, there's a performance bond, was there's a tripartite? Kind of thing that can be done, right?
Yeah, Sue had a little write-up on the different types, you want to share share that with that?
Sure. Um, and I, which I also sent to Michael.
It can be a cash, it can be a bond or it can be.
Right, a performance, it can be a holding of a lot and not releasing a lot.
Yeah.
Um, it can be the difference, so let me just find that and. Share it with you.
And and once again, Mr. Fusco, I'm wondering, do you know what kind of?
I I would, the performance one would be the lot bond and that would be. The one I'd prefer, uh, um.
So sorry, you can see, see, see some of my work here that you probably don't need to see, but.
No, no, that's fine, that's, this is good.
All nanny board stuff, um.
So there's the.
For you, the covenant, right there?
Positive money, a covenant, which is basically a promise. A a contract. And then if there's a first mortgage covering the premises shown, that's where you get into a lender's promising. On the applicant's behalf, that's kind of the tripartite agreement.
Is it just me or do do I feel like we got enough loose ends here that that we really?
Yeah.
More information before we. Sign off on things, I'm just wondering if we should. I hate to keep putting things off, but put this on in August as well.
So that mean? You get it all done for our August second meeting, is that?
August.
August sixth?
Yeah, August sixth.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
See, we got a lot of loose ends here.
No, I agree.
And and I don't know if you saw the the amount of money uh that would have to be set aside for a construction review.
Yes, then it was like nine, yeah, nineteen thousand and change, yeah, I would, I saw that.
And nowhere in what I just saw that Susan provided, did it say what the amount is supposed to be, what percentage? Wh- where is that recorded somewhere? Must be written in somebody's.
Well, we, that that we have to, we have to agree about, and that's where having a little guidance from Meridian would be good.
Okay.
But it isn't, it doesn't show up in the decision, the decision just says.
Right.
That it's a requirement, it's a separate agreement, that's.
And right now, right now, we're on the hook to have all this stuff done by the end of this month, but we don't have another meeting scheduled, correct?
Yes, that's the dilemma.
So therefore, I guess what we would need is for Mr. Fusco to request an extension. Is that correct?
I will request that.
Sue can.
Yes.
Yes, okay, and um. Uh, I mean, we have two meetings in August, but I would anticipate, I mean, I feel like we're almost there, it's just there's. This variety of loose ends and we want to make sure that everybody's straight. So what's the proper way to frame the request for extension, Sue?
So, um, I think we have some exactly like before, that say you um asked to grant or you. Grant an extension of time for final action to. A date beyond the sixth, so that we have time to discuss it, vote on it in a meeting, and I just need to get it into the clerk's office, which would be the final action.
So how about a request for an extension to uh August ninth? Does that work for everybody? Because that would give us a couple of days.
Yes.
Meeting to sign off on things.
Yeah.
So just to keep things by the book, Mr. Fusco, do you request that extension?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Uh, is this something we need to vote on, Sue?
Um, I would, and I would, um, I just asked, um, Mike, if he could just provide it as he's done in the past in writing too, so we can also have an. An email is fine, we can, I can.
Send it to the town planner email that I've.
Yes, yep.
Okay, I'll shoot that.
So I I move that we grant Mr. Fusco's request to extend the date for final action until August ninth, twenty twenty four?
Second.
I have a second from Deb Hamilton, uh, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor, Ray Cook, aye? Okay, Brian, Murphy, aye. All right, it uh it's unanimous, five zero. Thank you, Mr. Fusco. Now, uh, before we go though, uh. Let's make sure we understand what we need to have, we need to have happen here.
Yep.
Um, we're gonna have, Meridian is gonna look over the cost estimates and suggest. What amount of money we need to have. To protect the town's interests. And you've had a look over the number of hours that he suggests he'll need and. To do a proper construction overview based on the June twenty five, well, it looks like he's got the date wrong on his letter. Says June twenty five, twenty twenty three, I think it.
You could catch.
It's probably wrong, but he's got. Yeah. And then, uh, so then we'll have, we'll have an agreement about the amount of surety and then the type of surety and. Those loose ends will be taken care of. Have I got this right, Sue?
You do.
Thank you for that reassurance.
Covenant and the.
And then do we need to, um, now that we have the written decision before us? We've already approved this, right?
You've approved the project and you just need to approve the language in the decision.
Okay, so um.
This language doesn't change, it just, but you might want to just do it when you do the whole thing. Even though it doesn't change the language in here, because the language just says what is needed, we just don't have that in hand yet.
Well, since we're gonna be doing this on August sixth, we can take that vote on August sixth as well, then.
Yep.
Great.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree, yeah, in case anything else ends up getting conditioned, which we don't think it will, but who knows?
Very good, I appreciate that input, Ann, thank you. Um, so have we taken care of all the business we can take care of tonight for one twenty five River Road? I think so, huh? Performance bond, construction oversight, uh, special fund. For legal review of subdivision documents.
What about the stormwater management? What do we have to do?
And the stormwater management permit is here.
So the stormwater management permit is um pretty straightforward, um, according to Meridian's review and the board of health. Um, I'll just remind you that usually, in most cases, the board of health um does this review, but because we have a peer reviewer. The planning board does it in this case, but it's still the grant, the permit is still granted by the board of health. So this is just kind of a, here's the document. You don't, and I've already talked to him, he said the standard conditions are all that's needed for this. Pretty straightforward site and that um the standard conditions will cover everything, so we just kind of give it to. Give it to the board of health and they grant the permit.
Do we have anything in writing from Meridian that said that?
We do, it's in their first letter. Their per- very first peer review letter.
So are you?
It makes sense to me to to include a copy of that when we pass it along, just so we're, we know what we're hanging our hat on.
Sure, yeah, and it is referenced in the in the decision, of course, but I'm happy to put it with the stormwater.
Are you saying what I'm attempting to share?
Yes.
Okay, so there's, there's this two pager, which we don't sign off on.
Right.
It's a standard form. And then here are this appendix P and this is all standard conditions.
Mm-hmm.
So I assume this is all boilerplate?
It is, these were created when we we did the regulations um with um. Horsey, Witten and others.
Okay.
They're pretty comprehensive.
So, uh, and you say, do we need to approve this?
Um. I think it's, I don't think you need to take a vote, I think, just. But I think as Ann said, adding, giving the um the peer review letter to the the. The board of health is.
Good, is 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 everybody okay with that?
Yep.
Yeah, I read it anyway, yeah.
Yeah, no, it looks good, I think it's covered in in the write-up as well, item number nine here about stormwater management, right? Refers to this permit. So I think it's covered.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
Okay, and then uh. Okay, and then, um, what about the special fund escrow for legal review of subdivision documents?
Yeah, what's that?
That's different than construction oversight.
Yeah, I didn't know about that one.
Is that in my, um, in the agenda?
It's part of the agenda. It's item 2C of the agenda.
Oh, so the the question was if there is need for any legal review of documents. I know we've brought this up before briefly, but we didn't have an active project going when we discussed it, but I guess really would like to have an opportunity to put money aside for a legal review of documents if such documents are needed. So in this case, I think the only one that would be would be the road maintenance covenant, which should be fairly straightforward. We see those fairly often, but.
Have we typically had legal reviews of those documents?
I don't. But I don't remember us having a special fund for it.
No, and we have not in the past.
We have for condo documents, remember? Some of those big projects?
Yeah, we've had them.
Reviewed.
I I I think this is probably overkill and.
Yeah. I mean, it's been reviewed by Meridian.
Yeah, I I I think for for a two lot subdivision, we don't need our attorneys involved. I I I would defer to Meridian's review personally.
Yeah, but just just for the sake of discussing, um, future situations, because when I saw this, I was thinking in the past, we have run things by the town attorney, and it hasn't been an issue. Um, but now with the kind of new approach to the town legal thing, uh, going forward, I can see why they don't want to just give us the ability to ask the town attorney stuff, right?
Well, I think that's the discussion we should have ourselves, how we structure that so that we let an applicant know in advance um, of what, you know, you know,
Yeah, that's.
costs and potential, you know.
Yeah.
I'm a little surprised, but, you know.
You you know what I'm saying, though? In the past, it was, it was almost like it was understood that the planning board had the ability to go to the town attorney as needed.
I know, and so I think maybe we need to just send a note back to, either we need to talk about it or and send a note to Angus. I I'm not sure it's a I'm not sure it's something we should saddle Mr. Fusco with.
No, I understand.
That's what I'm trying to say at this juncture.
Yeah, yeah.
You agree?
Ann agrees. Tim, Deb?
I think they were like easement, you know, documents and things like that that needed to be, you know, trail easements and conservation easement documents and things like that, you know, that were part of the conditions, then it'd be a different story, but really don't, like you say, Brian, don't have that here.
I don't, so.
Simple.
Okay, but I think I think we should discuss it ourselves.
Yeah, I agree. Sue, maybe you put that in our list of things to do. For the next one, the next one that comes along that's much more complicated, and where there's
Yeah.
associations and all this kind of stuff.
It's 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 a difference, so let's, yes.
Lots.
Right? Or like building a footbridge across the little wetlands.
It seems so simple.
It is simple. I just put a couple hundred bucks aside, we'll be good to go.
There's one there, Ray. Don't tell anybody.
All right, all right. No, you didn't hear it from me. All right, then I think, Mr. Fusco, I think we're good unless somebody else. No? Okay. Thank you my very much for attending.
We're almost there. Thank you, Mr. Fusco.
Thank you. Thank you. We'll see you on the.
Have a good night. Closing in, we're closing in.
I can feel it. We're getting close.
Yes, we are. All right, thank you.
Everyone, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, then.
Those bonding conditions and, you know, agreements, I mean, that's not something that a layman would be able to handle, you know. I I think there's ways to do it without going out of pocket, which makes sense, but, you know, somebody's gonna give, this is a hard thing for like a homeowner to, you know, get a handle on.
So when you have those, you don't have town council review?
Do you mean the form of those, like the agreement and things like that?
Bond, the the bond.
This was before my time on the board. I don't know, did like when, like for Drake's landing, was that one reviewed, for example?
I'm quite certain, well, I think I think so, because they even they even review the release, which is just a tiny document.
Because of, it was of the magnitude of the project.
Right, right.
Yeah, there's a big package of stuff they were reviewing there.
And and actually, in the subdivision regulations, it says it shall be sent to town council um, for review, not just that, but like when the first, that when the application comes in, so the plans have to be sent
Right.
to, um, the town council.
Wow.
Yeah, so there's always some leave of us, because they at least have it in their files, right?
Um, yeah, this is something we definitely have to have kind of like understood between us and the select board.
Yeah.
And so so that it's, so that it's not a big deal.
And maybe it's an adjustment of the filing fees. I don't know.
Uh, that's kind of what I was wondering if if that's what we should be talking about, so. I I just felt uncomfortable get Dragon him in the middle of this.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's true. We are in a whole new world of town council, you know, when you just ran down the stairs and put something on the desk.
Hey, Mike, what do you think?
Right.
Exactly. When life was.
Or Larry, even back in the day.
Right?
Yeah, yeah. And then, and then this is, this is also the sort of thing where, you know, okay, so does this need to be a new line item in the annual budget, you know, that goes before town meeting?
Probably.
You know, that sort of.
Yeah.
So the one thing.
I should just listen. If you lose me up here, I got a storm starting in 10 minutes and and if I drop out, it's because my power dropped off, so.
So they just.
My goodness.
The one thing I'd like to finish up with on 125 River Road is I'd just like to have your approval of the Meridian's um, proposal for the 113 hours. Or is that seems sufficient for you? It's it's actually a little, just a little bit higher than Deer Run, which I was a little bit surprised at, but as you know, their their estimate said we return what's not used.
Exactly. It struck me as on the high side, but, um, you know, I mean, you do have a couple of wetlands crossings and, you know, it's it's a more complicated project, so I I felt okay with, it struck me as a as an appropriate number of hours.
I think it's better to better to go that way at the beginning than be chasing them at the end for another
Exactly.
bill that we can't get.
Yeah, and they're fair. I mean, it it may not come to that. Hopefully.
Right. Right. Yeah, they may not spend that. Yeah, I thought it was fine.
Fine with it.
Okay, then I will sign the, um, with for Meridian to, for those hours then. And request that that amount from the applicant.
It is a lot of money for that project.
I know.
I was very surprised.
Well, half a million dollars just to, uh.
But maybe you don't, it doesn't buy what you used to buy with it, you know, for.
Yeah, you know.
Site work, well, site work.
It's not a simple project. This is not a meadow being cut in half, you know, this is.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, and like I said, you got a couple, you got a couple of wetlands crossings, and you got some, despite what he said, a rather steep grade to deal with, and you know, walls and, yeah. Yeah, I just took a look at the the radar and, uh.
Yes, looking ugly out there, Brian.
Yeah, I think you're gonna get some too down down there.
It is, and and when it hits, it's just, it's gonna be one of those storms that's just all of a sudden.
Yeah, yeah.
So next thing on the agenda was the, uh, MBTA community's next steps.
Right.
Sue, do you want to help me out with that one?
Sure. So as I kind of I laid out in the in the planner's report, so based on feedback we've we received from the state from the 40R program and Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, the 3A program, it doesn't seem like it's viable for the town to use a 40R district for this project. It's just not a good fit. Um, in that, what Angus was kind of considering is several smaller sites to add up to another, to the total, um, and it's just, and it's just not working. Their regulations aren't aren't set up for that type of you know, really small sites, which Angus thought maybe that would be approach. Um, so therefore, they wanted to talk about how they would like to use those funds that were approved at town meeting, since they're not going to be looking into the feasibility of a 40R 40R district. They want to know how to use those funds to advance the um, proposal that we have or that we will be putting forth, that you will be putting forth at spring town meeting, and I know we had talked about, um, a community impact report and just what we might want to, what you might want to have um, assessed, or what kind of analysis you'd like to do, what kind of answers would you like to get, and then when we kind of decide on that, together with the select board, we'll kind of go to someone and say, how much will that cost?
You know, I hate, I hate to be snarky on this, but I mean, isn't, isn't this the select board's problem?
Well, I think they're asking us how we would like to spend the money.
They're the ones who wanted the money.
It was, yes, but I I think we, we, the town, committed to that anyway. And I never felt we got an answer when this you know, request was drafted as as to the the things that we're committed to at two public hearings in March. And frankly, if we ran the tape, I think Angus committed to several of them and said it's pretty easy to do.
He did.
Um, so I I would use that as the basis of we can just, you know, and I'm happy to do it with you, roll back. The community impact was a huge piece. It it'll win over some of the people. Not all, but it'll it'll show that we we you know, we've tried to do our homework. And and so, yes, I think, yeah. You know, if that's the part it has to get taken from, so be it.
I think that's true. The community impact will adjust kind of, you you can, I love me a good spreadsheet, God knows. You know, facts are great, and they may be compelling for some people. But where's the the soft side of this, you know, how can we bring some forces, persuasion, information to bear around other things, you know, like it's the right thing to do, or it's the law, or, you know, a few other things like that that are less quantifiable. I don't, I don't really know what the answer is. But I'm not sure we spend it all on bean counters. I think we might need to spend some of it on the other, you know, softer touch somehow.
You know, it 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 it's easy to say, well, we need to have another public information kind of session, meeting sort of thing, but I mean, how effective are those really?
Oh. Only those who go are true believers or mortal enemies.
Yes.
I think the numbers are what they ask for, but I think I think you're, I think, Ann, I think people maybe don't disagree, or most people don't disagree that, you know, there's a need for housing and that, but I think putting that out there is really important, and maybe it coming from another source other than, you know, other than me or you, or it might be.
I I I do recall a discussion, you know, I had with Wendy after the this special 40R article came about, where I said, well, you know, we may need some other money for extra work by Dodson and Flinker. You know, and she's basically told me, well, you could perhaps put an article together for the fall town meeting. Um, now, I don't know how how much leeway they feel they have in this amount that was, you know, voted at town meeting. Um, if if not, then then, yes, we we should probably think about some number. I I I do think you know, if if we stick with the two sites or and and get down to one of them, um, we should have one, another public go around, and there will be some questions that Dodson and Flinker may need, may want to address. Um, so I, yeah, I I I I would say, can we use some of this money for our our, the consultant that we had in place? On on a, you know, with an upside limit of some number.
I guess.
I think they don't do the bean counting, but on the other side with information about.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know if they do that, or I don't know.
Yeah, maybe they do. Maybe they can do the community impact stuff.
Yeah.
They don't typically. I've I've gotten some names from them of people that they've worked with that do that, and and it's 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 a small number. It's a small impact study, I mean.
I, the the other question I had, and I I did send you a note on this, Sue, was you know, where does this leave the Mullin property, which had been kicked around and and it kicked about as 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 perhaps another option?
Right.
Is, and and maybe that's up to the planning board, not, I mean, to the select board, not the planning board.
Yeah, I mean, I think the first response we need to give to the town, the first part of a response is to explain, or the select board does, to explain that they've spoken with these various state entities, and these are the questions that were asked, and these are the answers we got, and that's why we're not doing 40R. Put that to bed once and for all.
That's.
And then, and then number two probably is putting Mullin to bed or not once and for all, because again, that's kind of something the select board has to act on. That's not up to us. We were told that was a no-go zone, so we didn't go.
Yeah, that's, and and coming back to what Brian was saying, I mean, what questions were left unanswered by Dodson and and Flinker, I mean, other other than, you know, I mean, it's a year later, how things may have changed. I don't know.
Right. Yeah, you just wonder, um, you know, the court decision is due this fall, right? So, you know, there could be, you know, some different guidelines, different requirements, who knows, so might be good to get expert advice along those lines, right? At least have a resource available to us for legitimate questions about compliance.
And yes, and you know, Tim, that to that point, I mean, if there are elements of the bylaw that are modified with a court decision, that could change you know, our town's outlook to some degree.
Yes, it could.
Yeah.
And we certainly.
In that case, we we definitely do need uh, money to have Dodson and Flinker go through everything and modify stuff as necessary.
You know, could, yeah, clean it up or whatever.
So I'd have to go back and read the language of the article that was approved for those funds. You know, if it was extremely narrow, then we would need it article, but if it was just to figure out what the heck we're gonna do about this, then probably we can use some of it.
Angus Angus felt that it was, um, that it was not narrow. Basically, it was, um, to look at to assess the feasibility of the 40R or otherwise, um, look at moving the proposal forward. So it's very, it was broad. They, he felt that they could kind of use it in the best way they can to
Good.
come to compliance.
Yes, although I I I will say, there's a, there's another grumpy side of me that says, okay, money was put aside to see whether 40R would work. It won't. That's been figured out. Mission accomplished. Return the unspent money to town funds. You're done.
But we'll never get another chunk for Dodson and Flinker. Better off taking the the purse we have, I think.
That's, that's Ann being very pragmatic, which is appreciated and juxtaposes my grumpiness, but you know what I'm saying?
That's leaving the nose on the face.
I do, I do. It's a, yeah, it's a battle war situation, yeah.
I I I was made grumpy by the whole situation when you know, it seemed like this extra step needed to be done.
Oh.
Right.
So I'm, 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 I'm still, I'm still not, uh, past that.
Well, I think our best way forward, though, is to talk with the select board and persuade one another that we are all on the same team. And this is the job ahead of us.
That's very calming.
You did this and we did that, but together, we've got this little pot of money, and now we think this is what we want to do together. How's that sound, Ray?
That's that, and I think some green tea, and I'm also, and may maybe a little goat yoga.
I don't know.
They're they're meeting on Thursday. Do they need something from us but for their meeting on Thursday?
Not, not for their meeting on Thursday. Nope.
The judge has been posted.
Okay.
But then they're gonna meet with us, is that correct? But then they're going to meet with us, is that correct?
Yes. They'd like to meet with you, because they were assuming you were going to discuss it tonight. They're going to discuss it on Thursday, and then they would like to come, they plan to come to the August 8th. I think it says August 8th. I think it's supposed to say August 6th meeting.
August 6th.
The 6th, right?
I think it's the August 6th meeting. That's why I was confused, Anne. But I'll just double check. I think they didn't ask us to go to theirs.
Yeah.
That's in the planners' report.
Is the 8th their meeting?
Yes, they're changing now to Thursdays, but I think it's the August 6th, but I will confirm that.
Yeah, if they want us to, let us know.
That's when we can have our kumbaya moment.
Yes, and we'll be really up for it, because we'll just dealt with the A and R and 125 River Road. We'll be in great, great mind, I'm sure.
Well, if both the A and R and 125 River Road, God willing, and the creek don't rise, both of those should go pretty quick.
They should.
I, I believe so, yes. Yeah.
The applicants are motivated, let's put it that way.
All right. All right, I think that covers agenda item number three. You agree, Sue?
I do.
Okay, then, uh, the agenda item number four is the associate member.
Yeah, what's up with that?
I think you were going to discuss the fact that you need the one and to see if anyone had any ideas. I mean, the.
In the past, we, we posted to the West Newbury News, but that was long past. I don't know.
The clerk's happy to put out postings, you know.
Yeah, can we send a notice to, you know, one of their email blasts or something? Looking, looking for interested partner, no, person?
There you go.
Yes.
You know, add all the flowery phrases you might like.
Yeah. And, and we're allowed up to $25 a year in gifts. Is it 20, is it 25?
I thought it was zero.
It's considerably less than a Winnebago or a last.
Gold, bullion bar.
There's no, no gold bars allowed.
No gold bars.
Did find that out.
Can, can, are you comfortable drafting a little recruiting language there?
Of course, yes, yes. I think they have some pretty standard language as well, so happy to do that.
All right, agenda item number five is the planners' report.
Favorite.
You've got a page and a half here.
Yeah, it's kind of brief.
Yeah, yeah.
And the first part is about the housing, the MBTA.
Which we've just covered.
Yes, so I'll just catch you up on the housing production plan. It's been lagging a little bit. They did think that they were, they have given it to us. We, I met, Angus and I met with them. We went through it with a fine-tooth comb, and they said that they would make the changes that we recommended. This was after the, the draft that I sent to you, and just as a heads up there, Angus was, just wanted to make sure that there were a couple sites that were mentioned and shown on the map, and he thought that they might, those might be premature, and he was concerned that people might get upset if they were on there. So mostly it's about taking off, not saying sites or potential sites. Because he has a narrow definition of potential. So that's, so mostly it's that. It's not any large change in anything else in there in terms of recommendations or strategies or anything, but we're just waiting for to get that back with those changes on it, and hopefully it'll be well in advance of that August 6th meeting, so that if there's room, we can also discuss that.
Good.
Then I did go to the River Road resiliency study on June 20th.
Thank you.
Of course, that is, you know, all wrapped up. That was kind of a, a fast-tracked project. You can find their draft report there on the town's website. It's quite a lot of information, but it's, it's not, it's not really complicated, because it's basically leave things as they are, short-term, and then, or it lists short-term solutions for parts of the road and longer-term solutions, so. You know, it's a, it makes sense, and it's a good study. So I think the town will use the findings of that study to think about capital projects and move forward with, you know, creating more resiliency there. So I think it was well done and, and came out with a good product.
I'd just point out that, you know, we're in the inside of the curve here in West Newbury, so generally speaking, that's a more stable riverbank than the other side where they've lost a road already.
Yeah. Although we know this one does get its fair share of overtopping in multiple places, yes.
Floods, but it doesn't scour away. I think that's kind of what.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly. Actually, the, yeah, you expect a little buildup going on out there, and you can sort of see that, but yeah. The road is low in a bunch of places. All right.
And then the groundwater site study is one that is, is also posted, so you can kind of see that, and that ranks, they, I think they looked at maybe close to a dozen sites, but it ranks, this report ranks the top five sites plus one additional site. And it ranks the Page School site as number one.
That surprised me.
For various reasons. So I think that's an, an interesting read if you're interested.
It's really interesting. I spent a bunch of time looking at that today.
Okay.
They had, talk about data-driven. They've got this whole matrix of overburden and flooding potential and ease of acquisition, and it all feeds into it. It's, it's quite something.
So, so you told me at one time, I mean, I thought we had a site close to the river.
Yes.
The state tested it, it had more water than we could ever imagine.
Yeah, so this, this, there's been a site, you know, beyond Mullin that's been tested before. And in this study, they looked at it again, that the town was never, my understanding hasn't been able to come to agreement based in a large part on price, but now, based on the fact of changes to the river and, you know, the rising water, then that puts that more at risk. So I think it, there's a different conversation now.
But a bunch of the ones, a bunch of the ones they ranked fairly highly, including that one, still were ranked highly, even though they are prone to flooding. And what you have to remember is ranking is a funny thing. These are numbers separated by decimal places. So maybe that's number one, but number two is not far below, and number three is not, you know, they're not that dissimilar, so.
Yeah, but Page School is such high ground. I don't understand why that.
To do with groundwater, though. Look at all the wetlands up on Hilltop Circle, behind Brian's, you know?
Yeah.
Groundwater doesn't work that way. You know, crazy. Anyway, the comment they make about the ones that are prone to flooding is just that you would have to take that into the potential river level rise be taken into account in the construction of things, which I thought was kind of weird. But anyway, the other thing is it has to be proximate to the, to the mains. And of course, Page School is great for that, right?
Yes, yes.
And the town owns it, so look at it. It's really worth the read, I think.
I'll, I'll take, I'll look. Yeah, thank you. Okay.
And then just an update, the new Land and Building Services Administrator will begin on Monday. Jen Gary, coming to us from Salisbury. And she'll be at the August, I see there's the August 8th again, August 6th meeting. She starts.
Who is this?
Is this a new position?
This is the new position that will, so she is splitting her time. It's, so it's a new full-time position, splitting her time basically three ways between the building inspector's office, which is where she will reside, so there's always a face there, conservation and the planning board. So it's actually, the planning board has more administrative time.
Oh, I thought this was a whole different thing.
No, this is, this is.
We've been trying to get created for that second floor for about 20 years.
Exactly.
Well, I know, I know they were interviewing. I, I didn't know, the title surprised me.
Yes, and she comes with a, a lot of experience. She actually, Sam actually hired her at one point, so she, he has worked with her before in the capacity in the building office, so there should be good, um, good interaction there. Yeah.
Terrific, great.
Is she supporting the CPC as well, do you think?
She, she does have a small role for that, but it's just as, it's as needed. Yeah.
Good, yeah, because they had nobody, so that's great.
Yep, so that's, that's there as well. So, and then the rest is just where we're at with our projects. Got the final closeout on Drake's Landing. Everything's been recording. That one's done. And Deer Run is moving along, so we should probably be hearing from them in the early fall, I would say.
Wow.
Good, I mean,
Great.
I, 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 my superstitious side of me is waiting for a shoe to drop.
Wait till we meet with the select board. They'll be dropping shoes all over.
All right.
Oh, I guess I could keep sharing and show you the correspondence, or let's do the minutes first.
Let's, let's do the minutes.
Bring them over here, make them larger, and share again.
That lightning up at Brian's place, wow.
Ooh.
There.
Okay, oh, did you hear, is that thunder?
That's my thunder.
Boy, it is really, Maine is, gets these, just continues to get these crazy thunderstorms as well, with a lot of rain.
God knows we could use some rain.
Yeah.
I'd say that we're about a half hour out here in West Newbury.
Map showing the little tornado block up in central Mass. Crazy.
All right, all right, minutes, minutes.
Right here. This is the one that Anne and Deb were not in attendance, so it'll be a small vote.
Get away, you.
Yeah, remember that.
Nick Rose. Prove the release for Deer Run.
Yeah. Hey, did, you said potential right to farm by law. You pass along our concerns about.
Certainly did.
How were they received?
Um, well, yeah, according to Wendy, that they, those were good recommendations, and I don't know what further they've done with them.
Gotcha. By the way.
Did I copy you all on the response? Because I'm happy to do that.
I don't remember seeing it.
I thought I, I thought I did, but.
That, so the, I don't, I don't know, Anne and Deb, if you're, oh, since you weren't there, if you're aware, but the idea is sort of right to farm. But we expressed our concerns that any kind of herbicides or pesticides be applied appropriately and with due concern.
Right.
Migration off the site.
Exactly.
That's. Oops.
Was that it?
Sorry. Let me skip back to where I was.
Yeah.
Not, not the planners' report. I don't want that.
Yeah.
Ah, sorry, let me move things. Don't want that. Don't want that.
Up, up, up.
All up or down or something. Ooh.
Did you have them in word? I'm trying to click on your icons for you, and I can't do it here.
Here, here the rest of the minutes. Board organization.
There you go.
Farm. Okay. Straightforward.
Okay, move to approve the minutes.
Second.
All those in favor, ring a go, aye?
Kim Cronin, aye.
Brian Murphy, aye. So, uh, three in favor, zero against, two abstentions.
Great.
Correspondence. Saw there were a couple little things there.
Oh, let's back over here.
Is that Ireland I'm looking at?
I don't know what it is.
Ireland or Scotland looks pretty green for Scotland.
So one of those, it looks like.
I've visited one of those, those ancient towns. It's very cool.
So.
I bet the sun wasn't shining though, like in that picture.
Pretty unusual, that's.
Always beautiful in Ireland.
Okay, let's see. Permit for four families.
It amazes me that Ireland is now a biking destination. Just like cycling in Ireland, tough.
On those little roads. I don't know.
And the wind, the rain.
I, I've done a bunch of biking in Ireland.
Have you? Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
They do? Yeah, weather, none issue?
Per, permission to say, to speak about my personal life.
Yes, do it.
So, uh, if, if we're having a second meeting in August, I will be missing it, because I will be attempting to do a 10-day bike ride in Switzerland with my brother and my two kids.
Wow.
And I, I planned it, I planned it all out, and I use this planning stuff, and it just profiles and elevation changes and topography and all that kind of stuff. And when I told it all up, we're going to be trying to do almost eight vertical miles in 10 days.
Oh, my God.
Yeah, it's not, not exactly a flat country, is it?
No, I mean, it should be, it should be staggeringly beautiful, but we're going to be getting 4,000 feet of climbing every day for 10 days.
Maybe you'll get through half the trip.
Maybe, we'll see. They got great public transportation, so there's plenty of opportunities to bail out if necessary. All right, all right, all right. So there was a, there was a multi-store, a multi.
Yes.
Resident, three-story wood frame structure.
Okay, good for them.
And then another one in Haverhill. This is repetitive petition for property, so I'm guessing they're bringing it back.
Sounds like it.
That's weird.
It's the same person, I think. So if you keep going, doesn't that name come up? Some, some clerical thing. Oh, no, different person.
But I have to say.
Then this is Haverhill.
There's a good Irish name for you, Christos Iliopolis.
That's right. I like that name.
I love the name.
Modification to a residential development. Another one from Haverhill.
Yeah, this is the one that's the same as the second one.
Single family, Stanley Drive. Oh, this is the one that's in the water shed protection, that's why. And that's it. It's all Haverhill.
Uh, administrative details. So for the 8th, excuse me, the 6th, August 6th. How much time should we reserve for the first two items? Half an hour each?
The, the A and R should be fairly quickly, but at least 15 minutes.
Yeah, okay, 15 minutes on the A and R, half an hour for 125.
Yeah. Yeah, if we have all this stuff and we've looked at it.
So, uh, and then we've got our colleagues over at the select board, they want to come in?
Yes.
So should we, should we tell them, uh, 7:45? And is this something we do remotely? I think probably.
We do. But I don't know how they feel.
They do hybrids.
Yeah, you, you could do either with, with them.
And they would probably get together in the room downstairs and just.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you wanted to join.
Let's plan on doing it as our want, W-O-N-T.
So we might show up or, wait a minute, are we?
So in other words, Zoom meeting.
All right, they can all be in one spot, but we won't.
Okay, I don't want to drag Brian down from the Great White North.
No, I, I was just looking at, we have people here, so I'll, I will be here, so.
Right, I have someone here too. I'll, I'll be here. She'll be here.
And then, uh, as far as administrative details are concerned, uh, yeah, so the second meeting in August, I will definitely be missing that. definitely be missing that. I don't know who, who, who subs in as, uh, as chair.
Your vice chair, Mr. Tim.
Yeah.
Oh, that's.
All right.
I'm throwing that at you. I think we should do all the complicated stuff in the second meeting of April, uh, August rather.
Everything hangs over, yeah.
So that's the second meeting of August, right?
Yeah.
Are you around, Tim?
I am. What's the date?
Twentieth.
Yes.
Yeah, I just may be at my son's place in upstate New York.
But you could Zoom.
Should be able to Zoom. Yes.
Yeah, we can make that quick because I know Ray doesn't want to miss much, so, you know.
Well, I, I'm, I'm not going to be zooming in from Switzerland though.
No, no, no.
I, I plan on two activities in, in Switzerland. Feeling exhausted on the road and then feeling, feeling exhausted in the hotel.
Yes.
Um.
Have you practiced your yodeling?
Uh, 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 no, but when, you know, my screaming and pain will probably sound.
Yeah, the elevation alone, that's pretty brutal.
Yeah, yeah. And, and I hear, I did not hear Marcia involved in this.
No, I'm not going to say that. Somebody's going to stay home with the dogs.
She's staying home to take care of the dogs.
There you go.
Oh wow, this is a huge row. Look at this.
Holy moly goodness.
Wow.
Yeah, there's a major pass here and then here there's this deep gorge and the devil's bridge and there's all kinds of stories. Then here there are two alpine passes.
Lord.
Here there's one alpine pass. Um, and then the rest is just rolling. Kind of foothills stuff, but there's this natural, uh, uh, national park. There's two national parks here. And then I'd never heard of this before. There's a UNESCO biosphere park here.
Nice.
And then.
Be able to stop and see any of these places. You're just going to be zooming by.
Oh. I'll be lucky to do three miles an hour going up some of these gradients.
I bet.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
No, that's great, Ray.
So exciting.
That's kind of fun.
Feel good enough to do this.
Yes.
You gonna wear a GoPro?
What's that?
You gonna wear a GoPro on your helmet?
No, no.
Like to see some of the downhill.
Well, yeah, my doctor was, my doctor is actually talking to me about, said, well, you're not going to be doing forty miles an hour downhill, are you? And it's like, I do forty miles an hour downhill around here, so yes.
Yikes.
And you're not going to use an electric bike?
No.
I, 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 I bicycled in Austria and I really liked the electric bike.
Electric bikes make a lot of sense.
They do.
Yeah, they do.
Yes.
Now, this, this is, this is one of those big challenges that I've had in my.
Life list.
Yeah, and I figure I better get at it.
Yeah.
I've heard this on motorcycles, Ray, but run on bicycles. This is fascinating.
Well, it's a, it's a bike, actually, that whole trip is on national bike routes, Swiss bike.
Okay.
So.
That's good.
But I, I'm sorry, I'm keeping you guys longer.
No, no, no.
All right, we like you. We like thinking about you doing this.
Yeah.
With the kids too. I mean, that's really wonderful.
That's true.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, no, and my brother, my brother's a few years older and, uh, he's very strong, so it, it should be, it should be good.
Fantastic.
No.
Great.
Um, placement of items for future planning board agendas. I think we sort of talked about that, right?
Yeah, and the only other one for that, for the sixth is the housing production plan if, if we get it in time.
Yeah, we could, yeah, push that Quinnway if we needed to.
One to the next. We could, but, but one of the things that I want on the sixth is we'll have the select board there. Uh, in addition to what they expect to talk about, let's, let's just touch upon this whole, uh, use of town attorneys kind of thing.
Yes.
Since we'll all be together in the same room.
That'd be good.
Just because I, I'd like to know what, how they'd like to run it.
Yes.
You know?
Yes.
And I promise not to talk about sign bylaws or the highway things or.
Any of your usual beeps? Okay.
Yeah, Brian shaking his head. I wonder what happened to that footbridge. Did that stall out or they, did that actually get worse?
One.
The, the footbridge, uh, you know, that was part of the whole, what thing?
Sullivan's, Sullivan's Court?
Sullivan's Court.
Yeah.
Oh.
Did Tim say, did Tim say something about that?
Yeah.
Yeah, there, there is a makeshift footbridge, um, you know, it's got some good surplus slumber there. And it works, so everybody's happy.
Good.
That's it.
It got dropped in by an alien.
Yeah, it's not a hundred thousand dollar fully ADA compliant.
It doesn't look ADA compliant.
Stay dry when they go from your neighborhood.
Two boards, you could put the chair on.
Uh, it's just getting there. Yeah.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. We had twenty thousand dollars set aside for that. Did that money get spent on this makeshift thing or?
No, no.
No, this is not, this is a, this is a, you know, a midnight.
Yeah, so what happened, what happened?
This, this happened in the middle of the night. What?
What happened to the twenty grand?
That, was it twenty? Or was it ten?
I think it was ten.
I think it was ten.
Started out with ten and then there was another ten added to it.
Legal fees, right.
Maybe the town added something.
Yeah, I remember the ten. I think, but I would presume that this is a good question for Angus, I think. I think the ten is still in an account. They, what was lost was the, uh, community preservation grant, right? Or the, you know, the match.
Thinking of, that's.
Yeah, that was lost. So we went, what, four years? And so it was, you know, what do they call it? Whenever it's withdrawn.
Okay, so you, we weren't sending any Supreme Court justices on fishing trips with that money or anything?
No, it's gonna, it's hopefully going to go to a, a better cause.
Okay.
Than either of those things.
Okay. Um, I don't have any items not reasonably anticipated. Anybody else?
Woo, it is lighting up, lighting up up there, Brian.
Move to it then.
Yeah, Brian, if you have, if you have some sort of, oh, he froze. If you have some sort of aluminum rod and go in your background.
Lean out the, yeah, yeah.
Golf club.
See a bright flash, yeah.
Clears out the cholesterol. All right, so, uh, move to adjourn.
The drought is over, it sounds like. Yes, second.
All right. All in favor, yes. Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good night.
Good night.
Cool weather.
Bye bye.
Good night.
Coming down.
Thank you, Sue. Good night, everybody.
You're welcome, thank you. Gosh, it's pouring here now.